Can't wait to start, can't wait to talk to Chantel. All right, Bannock County Commissioners are in session Tuesday, April 22nd, and we get to start off with Chantel this morning and into Jim business.
The first case that I have for you this morning is case number 20250032. It's an application for cremation expenses submitted through Wilkes Funeral Home in the amount of $1,200. The application is submitted by the daughter of the deceased. They do meet criteria to be eligible for assistance through the indigent program, and the applicant has agreed to a $25 a month repayment plan upon approval of this application. The second application that I have for you is case number 20250033. It's an application for cremation expenses through Cornellson Funeral Home in the amount of $1,200. The recommendation is to deny of this application pursuant to Idaho Code 313403. The county is not the last resource for payment of these funeral expenses. The funeral home has withdrew this application stating that they were able to locate family after the submission of this application, and Bannock County is not the last resource at this time.
Any questions?
No. Mr. Commissioner, or Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve case number 20250032, and that we deny case 20250033.
Motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, Chantel. Charity. Looks like we brought up some additional hot seats for you.
Charity Stags, Southeast Idaho Council of Governments.
Wes Jones, Office of Emergency Management.
Here to present the administration contract for Lava Ranches Fuel Reduction Phase Two. We will be taking care of everything that Joe McGuire took care of last time. We'll just take care of it all.
So who's going to do the field inspections?
CCOG will.
Who will?
CCOG.
Who in the office?
Oh, in the office.
Yeah.
Oh, so there'll be a mix-up between me and we just hired an employee who's willing to help us out.
Okay, and where'd the employee come from? I mean, what level of training do they have?
What level of training?
Yeah.
He's got some forestry experience, master naturalist, and loves to be outside. So we've got, like, we've got the treatment prescription plan. I know how to do that. I've learned that from, you know, just over time, working with Joe. And then we're gonna learn more together. We're gonna be Good Neighbor Authority Grant, talk to Casey Hill, who's willing to teach us as we go along with that one as well, and we're gonna learn as we go.
Okay, okay. I was hoping you'd gone out with Joe a few times and learned a few things.
Yeah, especially with the treatment prescription part especially. And as long as we're following that, and it's pretty basic. We just need to make sure that, like, the mulching is only about three inches, check some stumps, map the area. It seems, once we understand the treatment prescription, get that made, it will be pretty simple to verify comparing to the treatment prescription.
Okay, and when are they expecting to start Lava Ranches? Or do they haven't started yet, or are they waiting to see what funding looks like?
Everything seems to be moving. They might be moving a little bit slower, but even the two reimbursements that we submitted for Phase One, they're processing them both together, which was kind of surprising. So even the, like, the pause and the slowness that they were saying was gonna happen doesn't seem to be there. So for getting these projects started, there's been no warning. It's just continue as usual.
The biggest thing that they've been doing is taking a look at the reimbursement process, and so that's kind of like that first letter that you received that you asked me about. And so they're taking a look at the reimbursement. It's not so much as executing the tasks moving forward. So we haven't had any stoppage or indications to slow down on that. The other thing is we've had a lot of great support from our federal partners on these fuel reduction projects, and so the little things, even like the site inspections and everything else, they volunteer to come in and work with us and help us out and make sure that those are done in a timely and educational manner, so to speak.
Yeah, we send the treatment prescriptions out to all of them, and they take a look at it, give us feedback, and then they actually come and look out at the site too, around the middle and at the end, and give us some feedback from there, too.
Cool. Questions?
Probably don't know enough to ask questions. No, we haven't gone out for bid on this yet, have we?
No.
Yeah, okay, this is just the pre-administrated part.
When do you anticipate going out for bid?
I'm hoping to get, so I'm gonna start doing all the RFS, like drafting all the RFS, talking with landowners, getting all that done, and I'm hoping to get that whole process and get a contractor onsite around the end of summer, so fall time, which is when they prefer to start work anyway.
Right. Okay, I was gonna say if you're trying to get done before the June season, you're not gonna make that.
Yes, no.
All right, any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead and make a motion that we approve the agreement with CCOG for the Lava Ranch Phase Two project.
Motion, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Charity. Look forward to your report.
For sure.
Wes?
Okay, what we have is a kind of a continuation of the technical services contract that we have with Southeast Idaho Council of Governments. One of the things we're looking at here. This one is more specific for technical assistants to assist our evolutions in improving and increasing capacity within the emergency management program. Right now, we're trying to focus more of our efforts to South County because we've got a lot of volunteer departments down there, and there's a lot of the things that they need, and so through the grant writing and that type of assistance, we can help them out. The other thing is there's a dire need to understand how to compile and create and maintain documentation of what's been done and where it's been done and that type of an instance. So when we apply for the grants, they're looking for historical activities or justification of need, and if we don't have the reports to substantiate our claims or identify those areas of need, it makes it very difficult, so it's not a win-win atmosphere. And so what we're trying to do is change that perception to a win-win. And then based upon a lot of the time and effort that Sheriff Manu and I've put in with the elected officials in South County towards the development enhancement of emergency management concepts and exchanging the resources and building that up, they're very supportive and in favor of doing so. So that's why we present this one at this time for the commission's approval to move forward.
Are there any of the fire districts in the South County that are difficult to work with? Have they all been pretty good?
We haven't had any big issues. One of the things we're trying to do is push towards more involvement of all participants for that engagement for the CWPP. So that's gonna include not only the fire departments, the elected officials, and the fire district commissioners. We'd like to have everybody on the same sheet of music. Otherwise, you have three separations and three distinct divisions, and there's no standardized concept of operation between those three. So we're trying to pull more of those together so it's a standardized concept and the growth potential is shared with everybody.
How are they doing as far as training? Are they willing to come together and train together and receive unified training? Or are you aware of any of that stuff?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. One of the things with the moving forward with the command post there in McCam and each of the elected officials to the South Counties have agreed to coming together and using that as a resource. One of the things I'm gonna be putting together is the 402 training for elected officials. And we're working on creating a community emergency response team in South County in which everybody can come together, get that training. And they're really wanting to share those resources for they have the capability to take care of their community members at a local level before things escalate and require more assistance. So, yeah, they are.
Good, good.
Pretty positive.
Any other questions?
A couple. So you've been doing this since '21, is that what I read? And what's the results? What have we saw?
We've seen quite a bit of opportunities in the grants. I'll let Charity kind of explain what's gone on there.
Yeah, so we've got a silo problem here. All throughout the region, everyone's kind of in their own little world, doing their own little thing, doesn't want to work as a team. And since 2021, we are seeing definitely a significant difference in a positive way of people actually wanting to work together, wanting to see what everyone else is doing, wanting, like, willing to ask for help as far as grants go, and willing to try it themselves, willing to, just trying to look for ways to be better. It's been really, really good to see.
And then this is paid through grants?
It's paid through the state homeland security grant program.
And then five months, why is it only five months?
Because that's the termination for our annual budgets, and that's the reason for that. We didn't start it earlier because we was having problems with the state and uncertainty of what they're gonna do and why they're gonna do, and so there was the delay in that.
Just seemed like a short period of time. If we've been going on for a while doing this, how come we're not extending it and looking at a further project down the line? My question a little bit there.
We're gonna keep doing it anyway. So CCOG has been kind of doing a little bit, but just for free, just trying to keep it going.
Magic word. That's what I agree with.
So if the funding ends, we're gonna keep doing it, but having some sort of funding source will help us ramp it up at least for these five months, and whatever we get, we get, and then we'll just keep going once it ends. Like, I don't want to leave you hanging. We're getting really good momentum.
Five months, I'll have questions.
All right, any other questions?
I guess, can you give me a 30-second summary of exactly what you hope to accomplish at the end of this?
A regional fire, what do you want to call it?
What we're trying to do is incorporate the resources because if you as an entity, Commissioner Bullock, was to apply for a grant, you'd be competing against Commissioner Huff and Commissioner Moser at the same time. And the thing is, the federal government likes to see that consolidation, that networking, that integration. So instead of having you as one fire department applying for a grant and competing with your neighbor, we want to consolidate all three because you're representative of Bannock County, so it's all-inclusive. So we have three entities with similar skills and skill sets that are converging their resources for the benefit of the entire community. So that's one of the things. The other thing is where their volunteer fire departments, they lack a lot of stuff. We've got personnel down there that are sharing boots, different-sized boots to respond to incidents. We've got departments down there that don't have turnouts. We've got departments down there that don't have radios. The basic things that's required and needed for a fire response, they don't have. And so what we're trying to do is give them the basic things to move forward and then add them so they can be successful to protect the community.
Okay. Because I do know there's mutual aid agreements been signed with all those communities down there as far as helping. The products that they have, there's a lot of issues with that. Some of them, the fire districts themselves, just won't fund it. So anyway, I'm hoping five months, you will see maybe some of the, where do we go from there? After we get this grant, where do we go from there to accomplish what your stated goal is? I guess that's what I'm looking for, is, like, Commissioner Moser, okay, after we do all of this, where are we and where are we going from there? That's what I'd like to see at the end of this. How do we solve those issues that you just brought to the table? And what did we do to try to accomplish that? So that's what I'm looking for.
Gotcha, so there's gonna be a lot of, so building relationships is always slow. So I want to build those relationships, strengthen those relationships, identify issues, and I would love to see them come up with an action plan together, whether that's, hey, let's get an MOU together on how we're gonna share resources. Let's get all on board on the same grant so we can get a competitive, so it can be more competitive. And then from there, like, so I want to get them their equipment, like, start getting them their basics. And one of the biggest challenges is that they are just all separate and just want to work separate. Get them together, get a grant out there, get them equipped with just the basics, and then simultaneously strengthen those relationships further to increase additional capacity after getting them the basics.
Yeah.
Thanks. With that, I would go ahead and make the motion that we have our chair go ahead and sign this agreement with CCOG.
Got a motion, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, go forth, do great things.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chantel.
Chantel Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer, and I have invited her with me today.
Adam McKinney, Chief Technical Officer.
Matt Olson, National Provision.
And we're here before the board to discuss a potential signature on security equipment estimates for the YDC building. This is a major construction project, and one of those pieces that have come is kind of one of those next things that we need to plan for is the security on the youth development center side of this building. That's the only piece of the, so we're not talking about the event center office side, just the YDC side. What you have before you today is an estimate for two different companies for the installation of a metal detector and cameras, all of the panic buttons and door controls that would be required. I did triple-check just before this meeting, Commissioner Moser, I need to clarify. This does not include the installation of the metal detector if approved. So that would be an additional cost, and it was different than what I mentioned this morning. So we would like to talk a little bit about the operations and kind of how this would be aligned with the continuity of what we currently have in there. So I'd like to kind of turn the time over to Matt and Adam to kind of talk about their plans operational-wise on how they plan to operate this equipment, and then how and why it fits best in with what the county's currently doing.
Yeah, you know, when we started this project, we offered, IT offered to move the existing equipment, and we were gonna replace the equipment from the building that's next door with this equipment. We only asked for three cameras in the camera bid. Somewhere along the line, that changed. I'm not certain how, but I would recommend that we move with Pro Edge. They want this to be wired the same way as the existing JDC. I think that consideration probably could have been made during the bidding process. We might have been able to use that money for it. It just wasn't. We presented it as an option to the teams, but at the time, they decided to go with us, IT moving those 14 cameras, and we only ordered three. Since that direction has changed, this is the best option. It's gonna give us exactly what we have at the other JDC, the existing building. Pro Edge is our only contractor we like to work with when it comes to the courthouse and doing these projects because they are proven. We use them in the detention center currently, we use them in the courthouse currently, and they meet all of our requirements for this stuff. So again, I'm not certain exactly when this changed, but when we consulted with Daniel and his group, the building team, this is by far the best option to get that back up and running, identical to the way it is currently. I mean, we're more than happy to support it, but, you know, we've tried to, IT has tried to distance themselves from the camera equipment. This is really, court security is not an IT issue, in my opinion. It's a court security issue. And we've taken the time to farm this out to these guys because they provide stellar service. We can't go wrong with them, so. I'm happy to answer questions.
I'll just step in here and say, when this come to my attention, I want to do it the right way. If we're gonna do this building.
Yeah, I completely agree.
It's time to do it the right way. And so I told them to go look at what that would cost.
We duplicate what we've got.
And where we could go with that.
Yep.
And where we could fund that.
And I would just say, from the metal detector standpoint, we do have a metal detector over there at the YDC building right now, but it's approximately, my guess is it's 10 years old. We're trying to determine when its manufacturer date was, but it's not.
It's even older than that. It's the same vintage as the ones in the courthouse. This would bring us up to the same level.
And I think from a security standpoint for us, you know, it's been nice where YDC is right now because we have panic buttons, court marshals are great to respond if we have a crisis or an issue that comes up. And I think just having excellent security oftentimes deters negative behavior. So we want to make sure that we have state-of-the-art security if we can. Obviously, bringing cameras over and old metal detector over is better than nothing, but if there is an opportunity to upgrade those and have the newest systems available, then I think it helps protect our staff, helps protect students and people that'll be utilizing that building.
Question?
Metal detector, I was kind of surprised at that one when I went through the agenda. And it does say, "An additional metal detector for the event center office." And this is not for the event center office.
It's just inside that doorway.
Because when I read that, I'm going, why do they need one at the event center? It just threw me off.
Crew's getting rowdy. Any questions for you?
Well, my question would be, is, we didn't have the best technology in the world. Do we have, are we gonna have security there? I mean, how do we implement the security? Is there going to be, what kind of an officer? Or, I mean, we're not gonna have the same security we have here, obviously, because of the, but how do we utilize this high-tech technology up there? What, how are you gonna enforce? How are you going to?
Yeah.
We could have the best car in town, but nowhere to run it. So I guess I'm just asking that question.
This system has the same capability as the system that's in the YDC currently. The current security in this building is kind of piecemeal. There's a guy that sits there and watches those cameras and buzzes people through the doors, through that metal detector equipment. I don't know if they plan to duplicate that up there, but this would be remotely operatable from the courthouse security or from the juvenile security.
But we got 15-minute lag time between here and there. I guess that's my question, if there was a breach, if there was an issue, we have good equipment, but how do we implement that into a secure system? I'm just asking that question.
Well, so during the summer, there's, the sheriff's office is going to have a deputy up there on that wellness property in that area. So we talked about being able to utilize that officer during the summer. So if there's a need and we're hitting a panic or we're calling for law enforcement support, there should be somebody close from the sheriff's office. There's an SRO at Highland, working with the city to make sure that we're communicating that there's a need, what kind of support we could get from that SRO if there's a crisis. Our goal is to avert crisis, of course, whenever possible. We train our staff to do that. But if something were to happen, Commissioner, it's the same question. How quickly can we get somebody there in a situation? You know, I know Scott and his team aren't necessarily, that's not their job, but he's also said that there was a crisis where they just needed additional support of people to be present. They would be, you know, they would do what they could to be present. But I think it's gonna be working with the city, working with the county, just like anybody else. If we're calling 911 or hitting a panic button, the officer's getting there as quickly as possible. But the nice thing is during the summer, I think we'll have a sheriff's deputy there on that wellness complex, is my understanding. We're close to it.
So you will have panic buttons up there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'd just love to see what you just verbalized in some sort of a plan.
Okay.
Here with this, here is our, what we would do with the school system, what we do with the Polkdale Police, just put that in some sort of a summary format so that the next step is we make sure those, we're following through with school, we're following through with the Polkdale Police, and that they are agreeing to take this. I'd just love to see that in a written format. Here's our plan of action. It would help, it would be more defensible if something did happen and we can go, well, this is what it was intended, and this is what we did in that case. There's a lot of schools out there that had shootings that thought they had a great plan in place, and no plan is 100%, but I, not that we would have that, but geez, that scares the tart out of me when we're talking about a security system and then think, but it's all wonderful and great. We had a security system there, okay, but how do we implement that? So I'd love to see something like that pitched with this. How do we manage it? How do we, what do we do with it?
Okay, we can develop that.
Okay, any further questions?
No, like I say, I think that, well, we'll see what monies we have, but also this is something I think that will go into next year's budget also, the budget timeline.
So when, so our last discussion with Headwaters, right? When they said they were gonna have 15 framers up and going, their intention is to make up the time that we lost with the hiccups with the foundation. So their current calendar has us occupying that building in the middle of October, which is super difficult timing.
Okay. That's a different picture than I have on this.
And you have to have that security system being put in right now in this year's budget.
There are some things, exactly, Commissioner Bullock, that we'll need to run.
Conduit whatever we gotta have. You'd need to be planning for it now.
Yeah, so.
When will you have the costs on the install?
So if that's approved, that would be our next call, would be to Pro Edge to finalize that installation of the metal detector.
Will it be Pro Edge that installs it in too? They're the ones here doing the courthouse.
So connect it together.
Oh, to hook them up.
Wouldn't I need Pro Edge to, okay.
Yeah.
So the cameras, the buttons, and all that stuff is just under $57,000.
Yes.
Okay, and then just the.
But not installation?
No, no, that, that's included.
For all the buttons, but for the metal detector, it's another $18,000 plus installation.
Correct, and that's the one piece that I don't have today.
I'd like to find funding for this. We'll talk with Christie and see, and then we could make a final decision because without knowing a funding source, I don't want to just jump into this either. Okay, that's where I'm at.
So we're talking about $100,000.
Hopefully short of that, but I.
With installation possible.
With installation.
I don't know what the install is. That's why I wondered. I know Pro Edge won't do the actual install of the metal detector, but they will connect it to the intercom and the camera system, absolutely. And I don't think that would be an additional charge. They've worked with that, it's pretty straightforward. This actually duplicates a standalone server for this building as well. So it'll be on-network, but this building will basically be security autonomous like the YDC is currently, or the JDC, I'm sorry.
What are you proposing?
I'm proposing that we, you come back to us after you find out what the install would be. Let's get the actual numbers. Let's talk with Christie. Let's identify the sources of funds, what our options are, and then let's make that final decision. I think that all of it needs to be done. I think that there's no reason to put a 30-year-old.
Agreed.
A system up there when we're redoing everything else at the courthouse right now, if we can identify funds.
Is anybody waiting on this decision?
No, we're moving forward with the wiring being done by the electricians for the network and the phones. That's really the IT side of it. We generally do not, IT does not do wiring for these security cameras. We have it all farmed out because that way we get it under the five-year warranty. Those guys will come back and fix it if anything's wrong. Now, IT is happy to relocate a camera, to adjust a camera position. We were even, again, like I said, we were happy to move the existing equipment, but I think this is a much better plan. At the time, I think we were just trying to get it under the cost as low as we could, and we were willing to move this stuff. We were gonna reuse the same servers, we were gonna use the same network. Basically, we were gonna pull the wiring. But again, this is a holistic approach to it. This is gonna duplicate what they've got existing, not just move what we have. The other thing is that leaves that space over there with no equipment should we decide to reuse it or remodel it into something else, the space at the old jail. So that reduplicates this, again, Pro Edge, hands down, we've never had issues with them. We use them for all the detention centers because of the level of quality work they do, and they warranty it all. That's included in this, is a five-year deal warranty, including the server stuff.
My only question is if we delay this, is there any lead time equipment issues with this stuff? Or does it seem to be moving?
Generally, no. These guys can get stuff in 30 days' time. We've not had any fee issues since COVID times with getting the, this access equipment. It's all made in America, most of it. We use that access because it's on the approved list of stuff we can buy.
Okay, so we'll put this on hold till we can get install costs or estimate on that? And is it with Christie about where we can find funds?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next change.
Second item I have before the board is a potential signature on a change order with Headwaters. So this is in reference to the YDC Events Center Office Building. If I can get to my right page. And this is the second change order we've done. It does look a little different than some of the change orders we've seen in the past. As you'll notice, on the attachments, it lists out different costs for different things. Then on number six, it says owner contingency, and it subtracts all that. So what they're doing, so this is costing those changes that we've made to the revised site plan and their revised, or the updated site work, does come with a cost of $18,233.60. There is a built-in contingency inside that contract, and how Headwaters has chosen to do it is they. and how Headwaters has chosen to do it is they show as a separate line in their invoicing. So that's why then they're saying that this is where that, those funds are coming from. So there is a cost to it, right? But it is within that contingency line. That original contingency amount was $245,000.
Does that track with you okay?
We talked about it this morning. They've already used a little bit of the contingency, but there's still just under $240,000 left.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I'm just that, all contingencies need to come before us. I mean, we've talked about this one before. But we have a lot of projects going on, and everybody says, "Well, we have contingencies, so we can just go spend that money." But all contingencies need to come before us so that we, okay, I'm ahead of time. And we have on this. I mean, we talked about the groundwork and everything that needed to be done and the hauling, and so I appreciate all the work that has gone into this, so I think we're all aware of it.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
I would move that we approve the change order with Headwater Construction as discussed then. All in favor, say aye.
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 Then the final item I have before the board is a procurement update. We want to start at the first active project on the dashboard for Roden Bridge, the Chip Hill Aggregate. We have received no questions on that bid, so we did not issue an addendum, and those bids are due next Wednesday on April the 30th. In regards to the road striping and paint, we did receive questions a couple weeks ago in regards to that bid. We did issue an addendum on April the 11th, and those bids are due at 10 o'clock, or, sorry, were due last night at 11:30, and will be open the day of 10 a.m. In regards to road oil, we have received approval last week for that, and Roden Bridge is moving forward with the piggyback on the Power County Highway District contract. In regards to the diesel generator and the fuel tank, the equipment purchase, the sheriff's office has been approved and is moving forward with that Sourcewell piggyback. And for Roden Bridge, their hot-mix asphalt has also been approved last week as well with the City of Pocatello, and they're moving forward in that purchase as well. There are two general projects that we're working on that I just wanted to update the board on. The first one is rental agreements. I did want to say thank you to Christie and John and Matthew for all their work on this. This is, right, something the Vannick County's never done, so we're learning things at every turn, with them taking the time to look and review. It is a slow process. I do feel the more contractor, or the rental equipment companies that we move through this, the quicker we'll get at it. But we are working on those, and I'm hoping within the next couple weeks to bring our first one back before the board. And the second one is in regards to car wash. That one has been annoyingly difficult to gather up the invoices that I wanted to send to auditing for review before it brings back to the board. I am going to get my last one that I need this week, or they are not going to be brought back before the board. That is their option. And so the intent with that is to gather up all those documents, again, submit it to auditing for any review or comment that she might have on them, and then bring it before the board for recommendation as far as which of those car washes here in town should potentially be opened up to departments to have accounts set and move forward with their, their operations as planned.
Okay.
And that's what I have for the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Annie and Fred.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tristan Borquen, Assistant Planning Director.
Anna Hughes, zoning planner.
So we have before you a request for a blasting permit in the county. We did include in your packet a section of the ordinance that outlines how we permit these permits. And so Section 475.2B is where it talks about using explosives in conjunction with development, and it is permitted by the board, by the commission, as long as we have consulted with the county engineer, Roden Bridge supervisor, and then the county risk management office. So we do have comments from all three. Hal Jensen, as the planning director over the Planning and Development Office, has said that he reviewed the application and has no concerns. Kyle Burmester, Public Works Director, also has no concerns. Wes Jones, Emergency Director, did reach out to the local fire district. So Johnny Kettner is the fire chief over there in Income, and he has actually received a call from the contractor a couple months ago, and they were fine with it since it's an existing quarry, and they have a secured area marked for no entry on that quarry. They, Wes also reached out to Vannick County Dispatch, and Dispatch is requesting at least one hour prior to blasting to notify Dispatch with contact information of personnel so that they know when blasting is going to occur and who Dispatch could contact if they have any calls or concerns. Other than that, we had no other concerns with this application.
Okay, questions?
I do. Okay. I called the mayor, City of Income, which borders this piece of property, and they had no contact...
Okay.
From this outfit, at all. And then on this map, I don't know who made this up.
It was the contractor, the applicant created the map.
And it's wrong information. And Clark Warner's place is at 1330 North Marsh Creek Road.
Okay.
And they've got that their seismic graphic equipment is there by his house on Portnife Road. I mean, I just, when I start going through here, and there's little things like that, that, that aren't really little things when Clark's the guy that lives right there 2,000 feet away from where they're blasting.
Right.
Have they contacted all the other neighbors around there? They're, they're just, these kinds of things that they haven't blasted for 20 years.
Mm-hmm.
And, and now they all of a sudden come in and they want to blast tomorrow?
Yeah.
And, and we get the permit today? That's, that's a little soon to me. Like I say, Max has a, the mayor of Income has a meeting on Thursday with the quarry supervisor, I believe, Hooey. But I don't think they did their due diligence in preparing for the blast. I mean, I've seen a lot of fly rock go into Income.
Yeah, they used to all the time. So what's purpose of this? What's the reasoning or purpose behind the blast?
So I think they're opening up more of the quarry for gravel. So they're trying to get additional surplus of gravel for projects.
Do they have a crusher on site now on this?
I'm not 100% sure on that.
I, I haven't seen anything.
I don't know that they do.
So I was just questioning, I mean...
Yeah.
It's been closed down for 20 years, hasn't it?
2008 is when the plant shut down.
I guess I would just, so we're gonna have a gravel pit there? I mean, basically, that's what they're trying to do is...
They kept their mining rights.
Yeah.
But, uh, but they never, but they did get rid of the crusher. They did get, they haven't blasted, they haven't allowed just to come in and start doing stuff. I think that there's still some hopes that they need to... I mean, I appreciate what they've done, but I still think that there's communication with the City of Income if you're gonna be good neighbors.
And to correct the...
The addresses are wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to see some sort of proof of the level of contact they've made with the, the people around that. Because they're the ones that's gonna all of a sudden go, "Whoa, what just happened here?" I'd like to at least see names, contacts, or whatever, who they did contact and when. So that if something does come back on us, we can say, "You told us you had contacted..." We have, we're just, all we have is this right here. I, I think I would love to see, at what length have they gone to visit with those who could be affected by that? I don't know how far you'd go, probably.
Well, there's nothing in here that talks about insurance. There's nothing, in, in our packet, there's nothing there that, that says, you know...
Because right there...
What's their liabilities and what's their protection for the neighbors?
Yeah, where Indian Creek comes down into that, a lot of those newer homes down in there, I'd just like some assurance that they have done their due diligence, rather than just say, "Well, we contacted the neighbors." So I don't think that would be that difficult to do if they've already done it.
I'd like to see their blast plan. I mean...
I assume they're boring?
I believe so.
You know, how many holes? How many, you know, here again, what, what kind of explosives are they using? Single detonation? I mean, I don't know. I mean, I've seen enough up there on that quarry that those rocks can fly clearing the income. I've seen them off of that, pasting in there. I doubt they would have that kind of explosive ability, but there's got, I think there's gonna be some more due diligence on their part, I think.
And then I appreciate you getting hold of the sheriff's office and stuff, dispatch, and because, I mean, they'll have to shut down, and, and they're, they're 1:00 to 7:00? 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. is their timeline? That's, that road gets pretty busy at different times.
Yes.
I'd just like to have a little clearer picture.
You know, based on the discussion, I, I really think we need to have a Section C in our ordinance that talks about notification and some of the things that we've talked about today. Our ordinance is pretty bare when it comes to that.
It is. Yeah, we checked all the boxes, so here we are. But yeah, I think it would be good to have some of this information just in there so that before it comes to you, you have more information to look at.
Yeah.
If you do update that, this says the County Risk Management Office. That's actually Matthew.
Oh, okay.
It should say emergency. Office of Emergency Management.
Okay.
Well done.
Yes.
Is, is there emergency why they need to start this week?
That I do not know. We've been in contact with them for the last several months and let them know that this would take time to get processed, and then they showed up and wanted it as soon as possible. So we told them we would do our best.
Well, I would move that we don't sign this until we get some notification updates and...
A little more information.
A little more information.
Perfect.
Likewise.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
There you go.
Thanks.
Buddy?
Good morning, Commissioners. Buddy Romano, Public Works Assistant Director. I'm just seeking approval for the rental of a couple tanker trailers for our chipping operations this summer. These are trailers that we typically rent every year from Idaho Asphalt, and we typically have them for about a month. We have a set of trailers that we do use, but a second set just kind of keeps us rolling and keeps the process going, so that's...
You don't want to stall.
We don't want to stall. We don't want all those guys sitting there waiting on the chipper, so.
My only question was on the term of the lease. It looks like it's a one-year lease unless you terminate it sooner.
Yeah, so what I've asked Miranda, and that's typically who I work with, is we just ask for a month on it, so we'll use them for a month and then bring them back.
So does that cause you any heartburn returning that it's for a year, but we can terminate it early?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. I had no issues with that, other than that, just a simple question.
Okay, with that, I'll make the motion we approve that lease.
If we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Buddy, will you let me know when you rent them?
Yep, I'll let, yep, I'll let, thanks.
Thank you.
Dylan?
Good morning, Dylan Evans, landfill manager. Before you guys today, I have the update for free days for the cities and towns in Vannick County. If you guys remember, last year, we partnered with PSI to run the cans to different individual towns and cities to do their free day where they're having a hard time making it to the Fort Hall Canyon Mine. He was able to secure the pricing for the same as last year, which I think is pretty cool. So no, no difference, no change there. Aubrey reached out and had conversations with each one of the cities, and everybody's got a plan, we've got dates picked. Everyone was good with the price point staying the same. So it looks like we would pay $3,040 again this year and absorb the landfill fees when it comes to the landfill itself. It's kind of a fun fact for you guys. We did 1,751 processed customers for the free days that you guys approved, and that totaled up to $25,000 in, in waived fees. So it turned out to be a pretty, pretty popular deal, and I think that people are like it, so.
And I don't have the patience to wait in line to go do it myself.
For, for most of the, the $5 loads, I think I'd wait till Monday or something the next week.
Yeah, I am. How much? Never mind.
I was just gonna say, do you know how much tonnage you got from the PSI trucks? All that they brought?
Oh, I should have looked that up. I'll have to run that report. But it, it's typically not much. When you think about like a household waste, mattresses are a big one, and they take up a lot of space, but they don't weigh that much. So you're probably looking at like one to two tons per roll-off, maybe three. So it's, it's really not as much as a person thinks, and it seems like the cities have really liked this process, so it seems like everyone's pretty happy with it.
Took us a long time to get to that point. So I, I like doing it still.
Okay, any questions?
You know, I always learned that if you're gonna do something, get all the mileage out of it you can. I would, I appreciate those numbers. Because when somebody down county starts complaining about having to drive to clear up here, it's nice to say, "This is once a year, we do this. This many people come and take advantage of it." I just think that dialogue, if you'd give us that information, like what you just gave us with tonnage or whatever it is, I think goes a long ways on soothing the beasts down there that think that they have to run clear up here.
Oh, absolutely.
So I, I agree with it. I think it's a good thing, but if, if we're gonna do it, let's ride that horse as far as it'll ride. So if you'll get us some of this information, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we'll run the tonnage on the free day stuff, and I'll, I'll email to you guys.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Dylan.
Do you want that in the motion? You good?
Continue.
Well, when we're waiving fees, we probably should, so let's do that.
Yep. I'll go ahead and make that motion that we hold on to last year's agreement with South County and work with Solid Waste, PSI.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Christie?
I have Tori, because he's helped me out with this. Christie Clausar, comptroller. The first item I have for the board is Tori went up and took a bunch of pictures of the forensic inventory that we had at the hospital. That was after Sheriff's Office and his office took any items that they could potentially use. And then he sent that list to Ada County. We provided them with the second page, which was the full list of items that we have remaining. And Ada County came back, Coroner's Office came back with an offer of the smaller list of items. There is a little bit of a difference between what we paid and what they paid, which makes sense. They have both buying abilities just simply because that's what they're in the business for. So they came back with an offer of $3,500 for these items, and then said in lieu of them giving us cash, they would give us two free autopsies. We'll still have to pay for all the drug testing and the ancillary items associated, but for the actual labor. So that's the offer. Tori was, will be willing to take all the stuff, and actually, we countered their offer with, "We'll give you everything that's left for the two autopsies." And then that way it cleans out the problem.
Well, I would like to thank Tori for her help with this. When I went up there and looked at the inventory, it was over my head, so it was nice to have you there to help direct things and, and appreciate all you've done to help with this. So thank you for that. And I'm okay with the two, two for the price of...
Two autopsies is what he quit with, $5,000. Okay, I just wanted that on the record.
Oh, sorry, I should have clarified that.
It's, it's, the negotiations and stuff, we're not taking as big a hit as we thought we would, and the free autopsies, we appreciate.
Yeah, when I spoke, sorry, Tori down at Vannick County Corner, when I spoke with them, there was some concern as far as where they're at this year with, as far as buying things in their budget. And, you know, he says, "Yeah, we're interested, but I don't know if it's gonna be this year." That's when they said, "Well, if you guys would do autopsies, then I see no issues with that." And then I think it's definitely worked. autopsies, then I see no issues with that. And then I think it's definitely worth our while where they're doing two. So I think it comes out. It works out well for everybody because it allows us to clear out that inventory, and really because they are using the exact same brand, same stuff. I think that's a perfect partner, rather than having to try and shop that around to somebody else, because I don't know who else is in the business of.
And the reimbursement for these items came out of county operations. Tori's budget is general fund, so it's awash within the general fund.
And that's what I want. Thank you. Just for the record, I wanted to note that these funds weren't from the state. It wasn't anything else. It was come out of our general fund and what we'd paid back. And so the two autopsies helped the county.
And we'll also have them, when they bill us for that, we'll have it notated so that we can track that and have those records to show that we got it too.
Yeah, the two free autopsies.
Wonderful.
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and.
Can I get one question? So what's the net? You know, when people wanting to, those say, okay, this cost this much money, we had to reimburse or whatever, and with us being able to use it in other resources, you know, like your department or the sheriff's department or whatever it is, is there any number of net that really what the costs were, if you can get me that?
I can put that together.
Somebody asked that question. It'd be nice to just say what, it really didn't cost the county near as much as people think it did, but I would love to have those numbers.
Sure. I can put those together for you.
And we are also going to transport two Ada for them. We are taking it while we already have another autopsy, so we're going there anyway, so we're making the trip worthwhile. We're taking it all with us.
Sweet. Okay, thank you. Now, I'm okay with your motion.
I'll finish my motion, and then we go ahead and agree with Ada County and the equipment that we had in the forensic, trade that for two autopsies.
We have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm just going to have us initial this first page, so we're all on the same page. Again, thank you, Tori, for your help.
You're welcome.
And the last item I have for the board is after last week's ARPA report, Commissioner Huff came back and requested that I put together the PILT budget and also how much money is remaining out of there, which was a great concept because I had not thought of that. And it just puts everything down. So what I did is I adjusted the ARPA spreadsheet, and if you look on the second page, down after the exhibit hall, I added PILT. We have a budget of $1 million for PILT, for overages from ARPA projects. The portion above from the exhibit hall were items we were, that are not highlighted, were items that we were unable to get contracts for, and were overages within the ARPA dollars. And so that amount adds up to the $453,325. Keep in mind, those numbers are estimates that, you know, handle put together, that tends to not, tends to be higher than hopefully what will come in. So hopefully, we're not going to be obligated to that full amount. And then we've got overages that I paid for the YDC center. The dollar amounts are in that first column, but then the comment column says what we purchased and the actual amount paid. As of 3/31 is in that fifth column. We had a little bit of overage on Sixth Street that we've paid, and then all of the signage that went for Sixth Street, the east side, and then other areas, about $15,000 is right there. So that totals to $539,000, which leaves PILT unobligated dollars of $460,982. My thought was, depending on what the cost is going to be on the metal detectors, we would probably take the metal detectors and the cameras that were presented today out of this PILT amount. So if you take about $76,000 out of that, that's 350 in there.
Have we got any future things lining up for PILT?
This is all for ARPA overages.
But I mean, if, you know, taking things out of PILT.
Oh, these are, these are all the items I knew of as of last week when I put this together.
So as far as you know, there's nobody standing at the door of PILT knocking?
Well, no, but last week I had $200,000 in overages hit my desk. So if this week is quiet, then no.
And I know that puts you on the spot, but not, I mean, just as far as you know.
As far as I know.
Nothing lining up for PILT.
Yeah, as far as I know, you guys have everything. Now, as they're working on these projects, things change and items come up, but that's where we're at. We still do have, on the front page, we still do have the 239,000 in.
Contingency?
Contingency on the YDC project, less $18,000 that was approved today. We do have 7,500 contingency in the metal detectors, but that is going to be needed. Hopefully, it's only going to be 7,500, then estimated between 7,500 and 10,000. So we're getting a little slim on contingency. I'm starting to get a little, watch it a little closer. But we do have some other options that could be available if we have some additional overages come up. So that was the only update I wanted to do.
Well, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Thank you for that suggestion. I should have thought of that.
No.
That's very good.
Yeah, fantastic.
So Mr. Chairman, I'd like to discuss and go back to where we were. If we have, if we figure that we're $360,000, if we spend $100,000 basically.
Because we got to allow.
The YDC and stuff, and there's nothing in our future right now, I think that maybe we talk to Shanda and we move forward with this project.
I don't have a problem with that, because I'd hate to have something delayed that's in the construction right now that we need to design or plan for that stuff right now.
Yeah, and like I said earlier, my biggest concern is we hadn't really, and how the Christie's brought the identification of funds and where we are, I think that we move as quick as we can.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
So after Christie's comments about where PILT is, let's go ahead and move forward. I've got up to $100,000 right now on.
Maximum.
On cameras and metal detector.
So is that a motion?
I'll go ahead and make that in a motion.
All right, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we will pause the meeting for a minute while we get set.